Great. Good morning, everyone. Today is May 6th at 10:01 a.m. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting in order. There is a court present. Onto item number three of today's.
Hi, Chair.
Sorry?
Yes. I'm going to leave.
Onto our next item on the agenda is to convene as the Story County Board of County Commissioners, bringing us item number four, which is Pledge of Allegiance. You can all join me for that.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flyer of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Our next item on the agenda is Public Comment. Public Comment is welcomed at the beginning and end of each meeting. These comments should be limited to matters not on today's calendar or agenda. Public Comment is again welcomed after each item on the agenda, and those comments should be limited to the agenda's topic. With that said, Public Comment is limited to three minutes per individual. Is there any public comment in the courtroom today? Not seeing any?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Brian, Mr. Brown is having a hard time hearing or he cannot hear us, so I'm not sure.
Here we go.
Okay. Brian, can you hear us now?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So just so you know, Brian, we've passed Public Comment. We're on to item number six. Item number six, Discussion for Possible Action. Consideration and possible approval of the agenda for the May 6th, 2025 meeting. County Manager Osborne, are there any changes to the agenda?
There's one request, Mr. Chairman. We'd like to continue number 29 to the June 17th, 2025 meeting at the courthouse. That is a planning commission item that was continued at the planning commission.
Okay.
Commended dispute of energy.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments about today's agenda?
No, thank you.
Vice Chairman.
No, thanks.
Is there any public comment regarding the agenda today? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I moved to approve today's agenda with the noted item, continuing number 29 to our June 17th meeting here at the courthouse.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Onto item number seven is today's consent agenda. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions about today's consent agenda?
None.
Vice Chairman.
Uh, no.
Is there any public comment regarding today's consent agenda? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I move to approve today's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number eight is Discussion Only, No Action, No Public Comment Will Be Taken. These are committee and staff reports, and we're going to kick things off today with the Sheriff's Office.
Nothing today, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. How about the Fire Protection District?
Uh, nothing today as well.
All right, Public Works.
Nothing to do with this time, thank you.
Jason, how about our Operations Projects Coordinator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike North in Operations Projects. Couple of things to update the board with today. Lockwood Senior Center project is moving forward on schedule. We're moving out of the structural phase, getting into interior finishes and site work, looking at the finish grading, sidewalks, irrigation, landscaping, that sort of stuff. Number two, the traffic signal at Electric and Milan is out to bid currently. Bid opening is going to be this Thursday at 2:00 p.m. We do have two plan holders as of right now, so we'll have results and recommendations by the next board meeting. Number three, water tank maintenance contract. Bid docs are nearly complete, ready for legal review. Following that, we'll be out to bid on that contract. And on the TRI restroom remodel, plans are at 100%, and we're working on getting that out to bid as soon as possible for a word of contract in July. Last thing is, I'll be at the CHD meeting tonight to discuss proposed repair methods for the B Street rock rewall. Hopefully, we can get that approved and get that moving. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioner Gilman, questions or comments?
None, thank you.
All right, Vice Chairman.
I'm good, thank you.
All right, appreciate the update.
Thank you.
How about our Business Development Director?
Sarah will give our report.
Great.
Sarah starts for the record. So just wanted to give an update that we have submitted our FY 2026 federal appropriation request to the senators and our congressmen. So for the senators, we submitted five projects, the Public Safety Complex, the Silver City Water Main Line Replacement Project, the Courthouse Earthquake Retrofit Project, and Piper's A Street and Westwell Rehabilitation Project. And then to congressmen, we just sent in one request. Per the Porter Group's recommendation, they helped us tremendously with these applications, and we just submitted the Silver City Water Main Line Replacement to Congressman Yamada. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you very much for that update, Sarah. Commissioner Gilman, questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I'm good, thanks.
All right, thank you. How about our Planning Department? Good morning, Kathy. Right on time. Do you have any updates?
Yes, I have.
Awesome.
From? What an interesting question. Thank you. So Kathy can fill it for the record. This next Tuesday, a week from today, at 5:30, there's a public meeting for the Gold Hill and Divide areas. The residents there were working on an area master drainage plan for Gold Hill, Divide, and Silver City with the Carson Water Sub Conservancy District. So all the residents are invited. This is very similar to what we've done with the Mark Twain Drainage Plan and the Virginia City one, Six Mile. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. Commissioner Gilman, questions?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Thanks.
All right. How about our Admin Officer?
Lisa Musso for the record. So we recently just updated our bid page on the Story County website. We're really excited about this. This will help different projects, especially for public works. Our Traffic in Milan signal is the first bid that we've placed on this website. What it does is it gives instructions to bidders. It allows bidders to register, and so we can build a list of potential contractors, different people that are interested in working in the county. And it allows us to auto-publish and unpublish bids as they come available or they're redacted. So we just want to make sure that the public's aware that that's out there. One of the benefits to that is, as we put addendums or something out, we can immediately send an email or text notification to people that are interested. So hopefully, this will help different departments out. We can also allow RFQs and RFPs on there, so we can separate it by department, so Public Works, Planning, whoever, and that information will go directly to that department. Additionally, we updated our public records request on the website to help streamline this process. We were getting a lot of emails and different requests for things to different departments who didn't have that information. So now there's a form that's on there. It helps guide requesters to different departments to see if that information is already available publicly on the website, like a parcel map. And if not, it'll still come out. We'll still get the email request, but as we go through this process and kind of tweak it down a little bit, the departments will actually get notified of the requests as they come in, if the requister is requesting something directly from the Recorder's Office or the Assessor's Office. So we're hoping that this will just kind of help us gather analytics a little bit better and help clarify different things for requesters, so that we can get the information to them faster than what we've been able to do for in the past, because it'll be a little bit more clear. So hopefully, check that out, and if there's any questions, please let me know, and I'm happy to update any information on there. Any questions?
Thank you, Lisa. Commissioner Gilman, any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Thank you.
Awesome. Appreciate it. Moving right along to Emergency Management.
Adam Wilson, Director of Emergency Management for the Record. Good news, our 2023 FEMA reimbursements that we thought were going to be delayed, we received a check to the Treasurer's Office week before last for $162,298. I'm sorry. Wrong line. That is for four of our five projects. The fifth project is B Street and Taylor. That one's still at FEMA and will be several more months. We probably won't see that funding until next year, late fall at the earliest. So we're finally making good progress there. We will be teaching over at the school district at the end of the month some bomb threat procedures and how to run through the checklist classes. Just continuing to work on that relationship. Our final HMP, the Hazard Mitigation Plan Review, is completed, so we should have that planned to the board for the next commission meeting for approval. May 22nd is National Stop the Bleed Day. We're going to be teaching a class over at the VC Senior Center at 1:00 p.m. That's a free class. You just have to sign up. You can either do that online through the Stop the Bleed website or on our socials is a link. End of the month, we'll be teaching Incident Command classes to N dot Region Two staff. As part of our meetings with them, they found they needed to incorporate into our EOCs at the local level better, so we're going to be teaching them some classes to make that happen. Last week, we attended a public health summit with the regional health officials. It was a really great networking and team-building opportunity for the region. It turned out really well. The week prior to that, we did the Quad County Emergency Management Integrated Course. We had amazing turnout. I think Douglas County had 60 people show up. Story County had a really good turnout of our staff for how small we are, and it was really good networking and team-building, and we got to run through some continuity of operation plans and a big regional earthquake disaster, and it went really well and really brought us together. So it's looking hopeful for us up here, I'd say. And finally, tonight at 6:00 p.m. out at the Virginia City Highlands Community Center, we're going to be doing our town hall for the June 14th evacuation exercise of the Highlands for the wildfire. It's going to be quick, just like 30 minutes. We have some informational handouts for everybody who shows up, so please come out if you live in the Highlands. It's really important to get this information prior to that exercise, and that is all I have.
Thank you, Adam. Commissioner Gilman, any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
All right, Vice Chairman?
Thanks.
Great. See you out there tonight, Adam. Thank you. All right, moving on to the VCTC.
Todd Tuttle, Director of Tourism for the Record. Want to give a special thanks and shout out to the Sheriff's Department, Emergency Management, the Fire Department, and Public Works for all of their help over the past couple of weekends with our inclement weather and making sure that those events went on without a hitch. And we did have some very positive response even with the weather, so we're excited about it. Biggest thing coming up is the Mix and Mingle on Tuesday, May 13th. We're hopefully going to have a little update on the Sutro Tunnel. It'll be held at Piper's Opera House at 6 o'clock on Tuesday again. That's May 13th. In retrospect of the events, the 54th Annual Grand Prix, April 26th to 27th, we had record number of entries coming into it. However, because of the weather, the actual racers, there was a decline in the number. Also, because of the weather, we didn't see as much activity up on C Street and throughout the area as such. So we saw a decline in the revenues associated with it. The new program we tried, the May the Fourth Be With You, put on by Signify Events, sponsored down at Silverland Hotel, had a strong response to it. They had 150 vehicles that showed up to participate, with over 500 participants. We learned a few lessons back and forth about how to make that run a little bit smoother, a little interconnection with our residents of Virginia City, trying to make sure that we keep those OHVs going in the right direction where they need to be. Coming up, Mother's Day, Sunday will be May 11th. There'll be a number of things going on. Of course, there'll be the Mother's Day Train. There'll be a special showing at the Virginia City Gallery of the West. There'll be a Mother's Day Flower Crawl that'll be sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, and of course, quite a number of food and beverage specials that'll be throughout the Comstock. So quite a bit of fun things coming up for Mother's Day. The 42nd Annual Chili on the Comstock is Saturday and Sunday, May 17th and 18th, 10 o'clock to 4 o'clock on C Street. We will be closing C Street on both of those days and open C Street for probably one-way traffic on that Saturday night, so that we can be able to keep some activity going through it. The Fast Car Rally that was scheduled for Saturday, May 17th, has been postponed. We'll have more information of that as it further develops. We also have a special group that's going on down in Reno. It's the plein air painters convention. It's the painters that come up to be able to sit down and paint the artwork that they see right in front of them. They will be coming to Virginia City. We anticipate at least one motor coach. There may be two. They should arrive around 4 o'clock on May 21st, and then they'll disperse themselves around town to be able to paint some various locations. So just be aware of them and some opportunity to have some beautiful artwork that'll be done here. And again, it follows in those lines of the art and architecture and group area that we're trying to promote. The other is the Memorial Day Weekend, the Celebration of Heroes Parade, which is on Saturday. We have to emphasize that the most. Saturday will be the Memorial Weekend Celebration of Heroes Parade. It will be at 12 o'clock. Lineup will start around 10 o'clock. It'll be the same on the south end, starting from the Fourth Ward School, and then the parade should be here in the middle of town as we hear the siren at 12 o'clock. There will be some parade viewing that will be set aside in front of the Delta and the Delta Bucket of Blood parking lots to be able to provide location for chairs to be set up, et cetera. And road will be closed during the parade. We will reopen the road as soon as the parade is completed. And a reminder of the Reno Tahoe Odyssey Relay, which will be on Saturday, May 31st. That's when the runners come through, going from Reno up to Lake Tahoe and backing around through. That's usually when we have relay teams that show up here very early in the morning. So please be aware of those runners and racers that'll be on the road, et cetera. That's my update. I'll be open for any questions.
Thank you, Todd. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Is that all you've heard going on, Todd?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you for the update. Moving right along to the Comptroller's Office.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Health and Community Services.
Stacy York for the record. We started construction on our bathrooms up in Virginia City. They're currently, right now, ripped down to the studs, getting ready for ADA compliance. We're running services as normal with standing huts outside, but we're excited to see the finished project, hopefully, May 27th, and that is it.
Awesome. Thank you, Stacy. Commissioner Gilman, questions?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Good, thank you.
All right. Appreciate the update. Good news. How about the Recorder's Office?
Nothing today, thank you.
Thank you, Drew. IT Department.
Good morning, Commissioners. James Dean, Story County IT Director. Got quite a bit of activity at Station 72. The HOA camera project has been completed. I'm working with Chief Longcar for a total voiceover IP upgrade for the entire facility and working with Jim on doing a wireless expansion on the new facility out there for their bays to get their Knox box working properly. Tim Shropshire has deployed two brand-new storage arrays for our primary data center in the courthouse, as well as our secondary data center and dispatch. Those new storage arrays have a minimum life of five years and an anticipated life of seven or more years, so we won't be dealing with that for a while, which will be nice. Working with Sheriff on the camera upgrade at the project, or the camera upgrade jail project, sorry, are going to replace all the cameras in that facility. And then finally, we're going to add access control project to Public Works, which will cover trans area as well as the front area of Public Works. That's all I have.
Thank you, James. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments for them?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman? Awesome. Thank you again, James. Appreciate it. How about Human Resources? Community Development?
I'm Joseph Starnes for the Record, Community Development. I want to first take the opportunity to thank Story County for the opportunity, letting me represent our department in Pete's absence. Well, thank you for that. And I promise I won't do this every month, but I have some exciting updates as usual. We're business as usual, busier and all get out, but for the first time, the month of April ever, I believe ever, but at least since I've been here, we broke 200 inspections in a month. We did 203 to be exact, and that doesn't even include plot inspections, investigations, or site visits. And it may not seem like much, but when you have potentially 40 to 50 miles between inspections, it's a lot. And on top of that, we reviewed 68 plans in one month, setting yet another record in our department. I like stats and I keep track, so if anybody's ever interested in years back, I can provide those, but I anticipate our numbers will continue to climb, so thank you.
Anything else? Awesome. Thank you very much. Commissioner Gilman, questions, comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
No, thanks, Joe.
Great news, Joe. Thank you. How about our Public Relations Officer?
Julia Moreno-Fritz, PR Officer for the Record. I have two updates for you today. This week, we are running a county-wide social media campaign to celebrate Public Service Week. This campaign features profiles and stories of employees from various departments, highlighting the real people behind the services that keep Story County running. It's an opportunity to share their work, experiences, and dedication with the public in a more personal way. And in addition to the online campaign, we're also celebrating employees in person throughout the week, culminating in an employee appreciation barbecue on May 9th this Friday. I will also be attending the Government Social Media Conference in Orlando, Florida from May 18th to May 22nd. This conference provides training, best practices for government communications, with sessions covering crisis communication, digital engagement strategies, and social media best practices. I plan to bring back actionable insights to further enhance our outreach efforts online, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Great update. Commissioner Gilman, questions, comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
How about DA's Office?
Good morning, Adam. I have clean updates.
All right, thank you, Brian. How about the County Manager's Office?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioners. Austin Osborne for the Record. As you heard from our Public Relations Officer, our team has been putting a lot of effort into nice little pieces of recognition to our team for everything they do, and I just want to express my appreciation for that and for all of our folks that are working together to get things done, so thank you.
Thank you, Austin. Couldn't agree more. Questions? No? Nobody has any questions? All right. Thank you. Last but not least, Superior Treasurer's Office.
Thank you, Commissioners. Jim Hindle, Clerk and Treasurer. Little bit of an update from the Treasury side today. We today, or coming this week, we will be publishing the list of parcels and owners' names in the newspaper as it's set out in NRS for delinquencies. And just a little update for you, we've had success. As you remember, a couple months ago, I reported that we had mailed out 360 delinquent letters to property owners, basically 360 parcels behind as of the last payment of this fiscal year. We are only publishing 174 names, so we've had significant success in working with parcel owners and getting delinquent taxes paid, both the current year and past years. And that is exhibited by the fact that we sent out 37 letters to parcels that were three years plus in delinquency, and we are only publishing 24 names. So again, that is something we want to continue to focus on, but when you figure for a county with 4,000-plus parcels, the fact that we only have about 24 that are really in a serious delinquency position, we are sitting in good shape as a county in terms of our property tax collection. On another positive note, we, in consultation with Comptroller McCain, we've been working with the bank to identify better ways for us to manage our money in both short and long-term investments. In short-term, looking at our bank account, we have instituted what is an overnight sweep, which basically means we are leveraging our overnight balance in our checking account to be invested in a money market interest-bearing, and we're able to generate better opportunity for taxpayers by earning some extra money on our accounts, so that when things come through, we don't have to raise taxes. And we instituted that at the end of April, actually on April 23rd. We're ending, we earned and are earning at this point 4.3% on our overnight balance on a monthly basis, and that is looking quite positive for us in terms of just managing our money better for taxpayers, taxpayer money that's giving us a little bit more return. That's it for today.
Great. Thank you for the update. Jim, Commissioner Gilman, any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman? All right. Appreciate it. Is there anybody from our nonprofits or staff that I did not call on that has an update for us? All right. Thank you, everybody, for those updates. Moving right along. Item number nine is Board Comment. Start off on my left. Commissioner Gilman, do you have anything for us today?
None, thank you.
All right. Vice Chairman?
I just have one thing. I just want to say a quick thank you to our team on the work they've done on our bill, Senate Bill 69. There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes, and they've navigated it expertly. We got out of the state senate with a bipartisan vote, majority of both parties, and are headed over to the other side of the house now. Lots and lots of work and time put into improving the legislation, making amendments as needed to reflect concerns, and so I just wanted to take a moment to really recognize everyone's hard work on that. I think we routinely are underestimated when we're down at the legislature. Sometimes that works to our advantage, and sometimes it doesn't, but I think that this team has showed that they're very skilled and able to navigate those waters and get things done.
Agreed, Vice Chairman. Thank you for your effort and everybody else's effort as well. I don't have anything for us today. That'll bring us to item number 10, which is Discussion for Possible Action. Discussion and consideration and possible recommendations of Nevada State Engineer regarding Application 94165T proposing to change the point of diversion, place, and manner of use of a portion of Permit 29214 and all of Permit 29213 from surface source located in Story County, Nevada, to a new point of diversion and place of use in Washoe County, Nevada for wildlife purposes. This is a request for temporary diversion. County Manager?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask as a technicality whether we have to wait till 10:30. As this is a 10:30 public hearing, I know it's 10:28, but I'm going to ask Mr. Brown if we're okay to start at 10:28 and a half.
No.
Specifically, though, we're allowing 10:30. We're just commencing 10:30 and not before. Can start after that time.
So we'll just sit awkwardly here for a minute?
Okay. [laughter]
Apple says 10:29.
Cool.
10:30.
It's 10:30.
YouTube says 10:30.
YouTube says 10:30. That is official.
Thank you.
So onto item number 10, which is Discussion for Possible Action and is a public hearing as well. Discussion, consideration, and possible recommendation to the Nevada State Engineer regarding Application 94165T proposing to change the point of diversion, place, and manner of use of a portion of Permit 29214 and all of Permit 29213 from surface source located in Story County, Nevada, to a new point of diversion and place of use in Washoe County, Nevada for wildlife purposes. This is a request for temporary diversion. County Manager?[1760.83]
All right, thank you. County Manager Austin Osborne, for the record. I'm also here with our attorney, Stephen King, who is our attorney for water-related matters retained by the county. I'm just going to give a very brief update here, and then I'm going to pass the torch over to the expert in this matter. Before you really hear, you have four temporary requests for water diversion and seven permanent that will come in a series. We're going to handle them one at a time, as required. And basically, we need our notices of diversion of water regarding the Truckee River, or Truckee Meadows Water Associate, Agency, TUMWA. Each of them has a motion, and then we ask in each of them that there simply is an acknowledgement, but if you feel unnecessary to make a motion and include without a recommendation to the State Engineer's Office for some reason on any of them, that you do so. I don't plan on giving this introduction on all ten of these items, unless you would like me to. I'd be happy to. The agenda language is fine on all of them. I will let you know on numbers eleven, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, the packet, somehow there was a migration error into the on-base system, so I provided you a paper version of the motions for all of those, basically the agenda cover page. And then the public also has one in the back of the room for their viewing as well. Everything else is fine. And at this point, I'm going to pass the torch to Mr. King, and thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Steve King, for the record. So as County Manager Osborne has noted, there are ten proposed change applications under a particular section of the Nevada revised statutes for the county commissioners to consider and have the opportunity to make a recommendation to the State Engineer if the commission thought that was advisable. First three, Agenda Items ten, eleven, and twelve, which is go through them individually, but they're all temporary change applications, so that's for not to exceed one year. And each of those are for return flow purposes, wildlife purposes. And so let me just also mention, in the Truckee River. I visit the Nevada Division of Water Resources Office in Carson City and spoke with the Staff Engineer Metre there, who actually is in the Truckee River Basin, Basin's, that's her area of responsibility. So I inquired, why is Story County and Washoe County, why are they receiving these notices? I have been not familiar with this NRS five three three point three six three statute in the past, and so I was told by that Staff Engineer that, well, in the past, the State Engineer hasn't always followed this particular statute. They have some changes in staffing, I think additional staffing over the last period of time, and so they're trying to comply with that statute. So both Washoe County and Story County have received these particular change applications. So the first change application, number ten, the packet explains what the purpose is. This is a, not a new change application this year. This has been, these applications have been done in the past years by TUMWA. And this is through for an accounting or if we call it displacement purpose, under the TROA, Truckee River Operating Agreement that TUMWA works under. And the, if, this particular, number ten, I, and if, ask Mr. Osborne, is this one of the Tracy change applications?
Yes.
Okay, so.
It's for the Tracy Power Plant.
Okay, so presently, the Tracy Power Plant has water rights up to fourteen hundred acre feet pursuant to an agreement with TUMWA. And on annual basis, TUMWA is able, in non drought years, to use some of this Tracy Power, Syracuse Power Company water right for these very return flow purposes. And so that's the nature of the purpose of this application. Water remains in the river. It will not get diverted at Tracy for its intended, well, not intended, but its designated use, which will be power plant crewing, but it will remain in the river. And by doing so, TUMWA is able then to have a return flow credit under their accounting process under the Truckee River Operating Agreement. So this is a lot of information. What's the result or any effect at all on the county or any owners of water rights in the county? And I think it's completely neutral. Water is, will not be diverted for power plant purposes. At the Syracuse Power Company doing business, NV Energy Power Plant at Tracy, it'll remain in the river. So that is an explanation, what there's, on this particular change application. And the next two, which are again are temporary for the same wildlife purposes, there is a place of use map, a proposed place of use, which shows it's used on every similar application over past years by TUMWA. It shows a place of use in the Truckee River, anywhere from the state line in California all the way to Pyramid Lake. So that's an outline of the purpose of the application, the, my, I don't, the recommendation provision in that section of the statute, which allows the county commissioners to make a recommendation to the State Engineer if you all desire. I would presume, perhaps in certain circumstances, county commissioners might say, we approve this or we disapprove. In this case, there's, in my view, there's no effect at all to Story County or any water right owners in Story County. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you all might have, and hopefully haven't confused the board by providing this general overview of the purpose and the intent of the application.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
I do not, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
No, I'm okay with it.
Okay. So does that cover us for item number ten?
That's item number ten. There's a motion. There's a motion to acknowledge. There's a motion or to provide recommendation.
Right. Is there any other, anything else besides what Mr. King has to talk about?
If you all understand everything, just fine. I don't have anything further to say. I think we're good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. King. Seeing no questions on the board, is there any public comment? Not seeing any public comment. Vice Chairman, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, Commissioner Mitchell, move to acknowledge Application nine four one six five T proposing to change the point of diversion, place, and manner of use of a portion of water permits and certificates as described from Story County to Washoe County for wildlife or return flow purposes.
Second.
There's a motion and a second? For all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. On to item number eleven. Just so that I'm clear, we've got nine more of these. There's nothing else Mr. King needs to say? We're just going to blow through the.
Austin Osborne, for the record, each one is different. I don't think we need to go through all the processes for each of them, but probably Mr. King might want to explain what the difference is on each of these as far as the water applications.
Sounds good. On to item number eleven, Discussion for Possible Action. Discussion, consideration, and possible recommendations to the Nevada State Engineer regarding Application nine four one six six T proposing to change the point of diversion, place, and manner of use of a portion of permit two eight one nine two from surface source located in Story County, Nevada, to a new point of diversion and place of use in Washoe County, Nevada, for wildlife purposes. This is a request for temporary diversion. Mr. King?
And before Mr. King starts, Austin Osborne, for the record, I just want to remind you, you have a paper copy of the motion in front of you for number eleven. This is one of those they got jumbled.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Number eleven, I would have the same explanation as to the rationale, the notice provisions under the statute that we just discussed, Agenda Item ten. This is for a different water right permit that is associated with the Tracy Power Plant. Water will not be diverted at Tracy Power Plant for the purposes under that permit, but will instead remain in the river and is for return flow purposes, wildlife purposes. That would be my statement as to the purpose of this application.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments about item number eleven?
Do not, thank you.
Vice Chairman, do you have any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, are you prepared to make a motion?
Aye, Commissioner Mitchell, move to acknowledge Application nine four one six six T proposing to change the point of diversion, place, and manner of use of a portion of water permits and certificates as described from Story County to Washoe County for wildlife or return flow purposes.
Second.
There's a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. On to item number twelve. Discussion and consideration, discussion, consideration, and possible recommendation to the Nevada State Engineer regarding Application nine four one six seven T proposing to change the point of diversion, place, and manner of use of a portion of permit one nine eight eight three from surface source located in Story County, Nevada, to a new point of diversion and place of use in Washoe County, Nevada, for wildlife purposes. This is a request for temporary diversion. Mr. King?
Thank you, Commissioner. The purpose of this temporary change application is for return flow purposes, wildlife purposes for TUMWA's accounting. This Agenda Item is slightly different than the numbers ten and eleven in that the present place of use is of the permit is for irrigation, decreed rights further downstream, south of the Wadsworth area. But the effect is the same. The water remains in the river. Water will not be diverted. And TUMWA is able to count that it's non-diversion for its return flow purposes under the TROA.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I'm good, thanks.
Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to acknowledge Application nine four one six five T. We have number twelve or thirteen. Twelve. Yeah, so it's messed up. We'll unpack it. Number twelve, hold on. Can we go back up here? You've got all these open for a reason. So number twelve should be for nine four one six seven T. Thank you. My, Commissioner Mitchell, move to acknowledge Application nine four one six seven T proposing to change the point of diversion of surface water sources located in Washoe County to a new point of diversion and place of use in Washoe and Story Counties identified as... I'm sorry. Do you want me to read it with you? I don't have it. What I have in the packet is another messed up one that didn't translate over, so if, I'm trying to reconstruct it from another motion, but I don't have number twelve. It's a much interfered. If you have a clean one, I'd be happy to use it, or if you want to state it, I'll say ditto. Okay, I'll go ahead and state it for you, and you can do that if you like. All right, Austin Osborne, for the record. For number twelve, you permissioned would be motioning to approve. This would be Application nine four one six seven T proposing to change the point of diversion, place, and manner of use of portion of permit number nineteen eight eight three, certificate six two nine, or six two two nine, from surface source located in Story County, Nevada, to a new point of diversion and place of use in Washoe County, Nevada, for wildlife return flow purposes. And this is a temporary. Very good. This is Commissioner Mitchell, so moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. On to item number thirteen. Discussion, consideration, and possible recommendation to the Nevada State Engineer regarding Application nine three four three three proposing to change the point of diversion, place, and manner of use of a portion of permit six six nine five six and six seven zero one three from an underground source located in Washoe County, Nevada, to a new point of diversion and place of use in Washoe and Story Counties identified as current TUMWA service territory. Mr. King?
Thank you, Commissioner. This Agenda Item and the next six are different than the three temporaries that were just considered. This particular permit is filed to change a permitted underground water right that is located, as my recollection, in the Lemon Valley area to, for, which has an existing place of use in that area, to municipal use anywhere within TUMWA's service area. So in the application and the packet, there's a, what's, a TUMWA service area exhibit map, and there's also a TUMWA service area Exhibit A, which has the many thousands of acres that the service area of TUMWA is presently showing as the area for this particular water right change application and the next six. So this is in the, as I'm recalling just historically, TUMWA has acquired some of the smaller water systems in Washoe County. As an example, they acquired some years ago, Washoe County's standalone system. This may have been part of it. The, the result is that the particular water, under this water right permit, will not just be limited to serving that one discrete area in the North Valleys area of Washoe County, but anywhere within TUMWA's service area. So, question is that I initially first have, and I've had the discussion with County Manager Osborne, well, gee, what is TUMWA's service area? So looking at the Exhibit B, I think, map, and you, some map that's used for these particular change applications in front of you today, but in the past, it shows a large area of a map, and it shows the service area in most parts going to the easterly edge, joining the boundary of Story County. And there's an Exhibit A, legal description as well, which is usually in sections and just your adequate parts designation of a section or all of a section. So the use of the water presently is Washoe County. TUMWA wants to just change it to any place within the TUMWA service area, which I'm unsure if it had, if there's any place in Story County that is a TUMWA service area. But having said that, in looking at the Exhibit A and then the Exhibit B map, it looks like there's a, perhaps three hundred and twenty acres in one section thirteen and maybe a hundred and sixty acres, which is a short section, a section eighteen, that are right along I eighty going into, or south of the Truckee River that should be in Story County that are included, for whatever reason, on this Exhibit A, the legal description, and on, I believe, this Exhibit B, just shows a drawn map to support the application. So I am, have made a request to TUMWA to try to find the original foundational documents for TUMWA. There's different documents listed in TUMWA's records, one being a cooperative agreement between Washoe County, City of Reno, City of Sparks, dated December two thousand. Another is a June two thousand and one joint powers agreement, same parties. But to learn in those agreements what the proposed TUMWA service area is. I'm not aware that there's any service that TUMWA has ever provided for Story County and along that I eighty area. I don't know if that's, this is an error. So really, at this point, investigating to see why those areas that appear to be along Interstate eighty, right at the very northern area of Story County, just south of the river on I eighty, are included. So that's kind of some background, is just a query they don't have an answer to yet as to why this particular change application that's just going from one well in Washoe County and a service area in the North Valleys can now be used anywhere within TUMWA's service area, which my view, understanding is would be Washoe County, Reno, and Sparks. So all this being said, let me just cut to what's important. This is similar to the three temporary change applications the commission just considered. And I don't see any effect one way or the other on any interest of Story County or on a Story County water right owners. And so it's, I would just... And so it's, I would just suggest that a neutral position be taken as far as any consideration for for a recommendation to the State Engineer, which would be to say there's really nothing to recommend. So that would be my explanation of this particular change application, and any questions, I will try to answer them as best I can with the information I have presently on the Tumwah's service area.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I'm just wondering, Mr. King, I'm wondering if it's possible or even probable that the reason this is coming to us is that potentially, since they're expanding it to the whole service area, that potentially the new point source of, the new point of diversion potentially could be in our county, and that might be even if there was no plan to serve into our county, and that may be what triggered it to be put, kicked over to us.
No, the, thank you, Commissioner Mitchell. No, I don't believe that would be the the reason for this change application. I don't see a pointed diversion as being any associated with any location in Story County, but it just, it appears, as best I can determine as I stand here today, is that it looks like there's some acreage that has been leased in the legal description on the Exhibit A and then on this map that falls over into Story County.
Very good, thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment regarding item thirteen? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I Commissioner Mitchell moved to acknowledge application nine three four three three proposing to change the point of diversion of underground water sources located in Story County and Washoe Counties identified as the current Tumwah Service Area.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passage unanimously. Onto item number fourteen. This is discussion, consideration and possible recommendation to the Nevada State Engineer regarding application nine three four three four proposing to change the point of diversion, place and manner of use of a portion of permit six six eight five three from an underground source located in Washoe County, Nevada to a new point of diversion and place of use in Washoe County, Nevada identified as a current Tumwah Service Territory. Mr. King?
Thank you, Commissioner. Agenda item fourteen is similar to the agenda item that you just considered, number thirteen. This is an underground source. I believe it's in the Lemon Valley area. The water under this change application, if it's approved as a permit by the Nevada State Engineer, would allow that water to be used anywhere within Tumwah's service area.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not.
Vice Chairman?
I'm good, thank you.
How about public comment on item number fourteen? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I am. I Commissioner Mitchell moved to acknowledge application nine three four three four proposing to change the point of diversion of underground water sources located in Washoe County identified as the current Tumwah Service Area.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number fifteen. This is discussion, consideration and possible recommendation to the Nevada State Engineer regarding application nine three nine two one proposing to change the point of diversion, place and manner of use of claim seventy six and seventy six A of the final decree entered in the District Court of the United States in and for the District of Nevada entitled the United States of America, Plaintiff versus Or Water Ditch Company and the defendants from surface water located in Washoe County, Nevada to a new point of diversion and place of use in Washoe and Story Counties identified as a current Tumwah Service Agreement. Mr. King?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. So this application is an application that is seeking to change the existing decreed water rights that are under the, what's called the Or Water Ditch Decree, Truckee River Decree, from irrigation with a place of use being a historic, I'll call it a historic irrigated area located in Washoe County to a new place of use, manner of use and point of diversion in Tumwah's service area. So this is the, I will call it the usual practice where over the decades where Truckee River Decree, or which is Or Water Ditch Decree water rights that have been, that were decreed for irrigation are, then under Nevada law and under the decree, are changed to then be able to be used for municipal purposes by the water purveyor at this point in time being being Tumwah. So there's no effect on Story County or on any Story County water rights or holders of water rights in Story County, in my view.
All right, thank you, Mr. King. Commissioner Gilman, questions, comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
No.
Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I am. My Commissioner Mitchell moved to acknowledge application nine three nine two one proposing to change the point of diversion, place and manner of use of described claim seventy six, seventy six A of the final decree described from surface water located in Washoe County to a new point source, a new point of diversion and place of use in Washoe and Story Counties identified as the current Tumwah Service Area.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number sixteen. Discussion, consideration and possible recommendation to the Nevada State Engineer regarding application nine three eight two five proposing to change the point of diversion, place and manner of use of a portion of existing permit six five seven eight zero from a surface source located in Washoe County, Nevada to a new point of diversion and place of use in Washoe County and Story Counties identified as the current Tumwah Service Territory. Mr. King?
Thank you, Commissioner. Agenda item sixteen is similar to the fifteen that we just discussed. The only difference, just the pedigree, if you will, the water right, it was initially, well, it is, a part of the Or Ditch Decree or Water Ditch Decree, surface water rights that had already had one change at least, or has had one change in the past where it is now a permit, which is six five seven eight zero, and it's a surface water right that's now being an application filed to now change the place of use, manner of use and and the service area, and the place of use to the whole service area of Tumwah. So there is no effect on my consideration to the interest of Story County or to any holders of water rights in Story County.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gilman, questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
No.
Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I Commissioner Mitchell moved to acknowledge application nine three eight two five proposing to change the point of diversion of surface water sources located in Washoe County to a new point of diversion and place of use in Washoe and Story Counties identified as current Tumwah Service Area.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number seventeen. Discussion, consideration and possible recommendation to the Nevada State Engineer regarding application nine four zero seven five proposing to change the point of diversion, place and manner of use of a portion of claim one seventy nine of the Truckee River Decree from a surface source located in Washoe County, Nevada to a new point of diversion and place of use in Washoe and Story Counties identified as the current Tumwah Service Territory. Mr. King?
Yes, Commissioner. So this agenda item is concerns an application filed to change an existing decreed Truckee River water right, which decreed is for irrigation, to allow Tumwah to then provide that water, to actually to use that water for municipal purposes at its approved points of diversion along the Truckee River in its Truckee, in its current Tumwah Service Area.
All right, thank you, Mr. King. Excuse me, Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Uh, no, thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I am. Can I just confirm the application number that this deals with? Is it nine four oh seven five? Does that sound right?
That's what I have.
Great, thank you. I Commissioner Mitchell acknowledged application, moved to acknowledge application nine four oh seven five proposing to change the point of diversion of surface water sources located in Washoe County to a new point of diversion and place of use in Washoe and Story Counties identified as the current Tumwah Service Area.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number eighteen. Discussion, consideration and possible recommendation to the Nevada State Engineer regarding application nine four zero seven six proposing to change the point of diversion, place and manner of use of a portion of claim three three one of the Truckee River Decree from a surface source located in Washoe County, Nevada to a new point of diversion and place of use in Washoe and Story County identified as the current Tumwah Service Area, Territories. Excuse me. Mr. King?
Thank you, Commissioner. Agenda item eighteen, as was the case in the agenda item seventeen that I just considered, is a request through a change application to the State Engineer to change a Truckee River Decree irrigation right, surface water right for for use, for municipal use purposes by Tumwah, anywhere within Tumwah's service area.
Thank you, Mr. King. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
Nope.
Vice Chairman? Public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I Commissioner Mitchell moved to acknowledge application nine four oh seven six proposing to change the point of diversion of surface water sources located in Washoe County to a new point of diversion and place of use in Washoe and Story Counties identified as the current Tumwah Service Area.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number nineteen. This is discussion, consideration and possible recommendation to the Nevada State Engineer regarding application nine three four three two proposing to change the point of diversion, place and manner of use of a portion of permit five five nine three eight from an underground source located in Story County, Nevada to a new point of diversion and place of use in Washoe and Story Counties identified as a current Tumwah Service Territory. Mr. King?
Yes, Commissioner. This change application requests permission from the State Engineer to change an existing permit, which is an underground source of water with a specific place of use in Washoe County to a place of use anywhere within the current Tumwah Service Area. There should be no effect, in my estimation, on Story County or on any holder of water rights in Story County.
All right, thank you, Mr. King. Commissioner Gilman, any questions or comments?
Nope.
Vice Chairman? Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I Commissioner Mitchell moved to acknowledge application nine three four three two proposing to change the point of diversion of underground water sources located in Story and Washoe County identified as the current Tumwah Service Territory.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. King. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Onto item number twenty. It's a recess to convene as the Story County Highway Board. Bring us item number twenty one, which is discussion only, no action. The public comment will be taken. Report to the Public Works Department regarding roads and highways throughout Story County.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Jason Wersbicki for the record. Just a quick update. We're doing multiple small in-house projects throughout the county. Currently, we're down patch paving, canyon way from the cattle girds all the way back to the rock quarry so the so the trucks will quit falling apart on the road. It's a good area to get some extra parts for our trucks, though. Just kidding, of course.
Allegedly, Jason. I thought you said.
And then just doing a lot of cleanup around town from the, you know, from the GP, because there was an awful lot of mud tracked out everywhere. And that's about all I have at this point in time.
Thank you, Jason. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments for Jason?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Thanks.
Awesome. Thanks for the update, Jason.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate it. Onto item number twenty two, which is discussion for possible action, consideration and possible approval for the Public Works Director to sign the recommendation of award and contract for the two thousand twenty five road rehabilitation by Dow Engineering to cruise construction in the amount of three million eight hundred four thousand seven hundred thirty dollars and zero cents in Dow's Task Order seventy nine for construction management in the amount of four hundred forty five thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars. And asking for a total not to exceed four point five million dollars to cover the two known bid amounts plus any unforeseeable items that may come up during the construction. Jason?
Good afternoon or morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Jason Wersbicki again for the record. Dow Engineering held a bid opening for the two thousand twenty five road rehab project back on Thursday, April tenth at two P M. The engineer's estimate with the bid ops was roughly a little over five million dollars. There were five responsive bids. Cruise construction was apparent low at three point eight million, and granite construction was a high at six point one million. Dow issued a task order seventy nine for construction management in the amount of four hundred forty five thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars. This total amount is four point two five million cents. Project includes B Street and Union Street. There could be a potential for many unknowns once we start tearing up the street, and this is why I'm asking or requesting an amount not to exceed four point five million.
Thank you, Jason. Commissioner Gilman, questions, comments?
No, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Nope.
Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I am. I Commissioner Mitchell moved to approve the Public Works Director to sign the recommendation of award and contract for the two thousand twenty five road rehabilitation to cruise construction and Dow Engineering in the amount, in an amount not to exceed four point five million dollars.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Onto item number twenty three. It's a recess to convene as the Story County Fire Protection District Board. Are you going to run this next one?
Brandy's on her way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto item number twenty four. Should we wait for Brandy?
She is right here.
Glad you could join us today. Onto item number twenty four. Discussion for possible action, consideration and possible approval of modifications to the collective bargaining agreement between the Story County Fire Protection District and Story County Firefighters Association Local four two two seven. Brandy?
Good morning, Commissioners. Brandy Lopez for the record. Sorry, I ran up this area. We recently went under, underwent negotiations with Story County Firefighters Association, IAF, Local four twenty two twenty seven. Sorry.
It's all right. It happens to meet you.
They had a re-opener clause in the collective bargaining agreement for each side in the last year of the contract, so the union chose to open up wages and management opened up hours of work. We were able to come up with an agreement between both parties. The union will receive one percent cost of living adjustment over the cost of their contribution to PERS, and we tighten up the language under the hours of work. Is there anything that you'd like to add?
No, I think that sounds... All right, thank you, Brandi. Chief, you got nothing? All right. Fire Commissioner Gilman, questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Fire Commissioner Mitchell? Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Fire Commissioner Mitchell, you prepared to make a motion?
In accordance with the recommendation by staff and the tentative agreement between Story County Fire Protection District, or the employer, and the Story County Firefighters Association Local 4227, the union, I, Fire Commissioner Mitchell, hereby move to approve the modifications to the 2023 to 2026 collective bargaining agreement between the parties.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Brandi.
Thank you.
You probably just could've... Item number twenty-five, discussion for possible action, review and discussion on the 25 through 2026 Story County Fire Protection District projected final budget. Controller McCain?
Good morning, Jennifer McCain for the record. This is our first presentation of the projected fire district's final budget. I made a joke earlier that I initially was going to do a song and dance. I actually did have some graphs and things presented to explain a little bit more of the budget, but I thought the agenda was a little bit too long for today, so hopefully I can show you that next week or next meeting. With that, the fire general fund revenue remains unchanged at approximately $20 million. The expenses are slightly increased to $14.8 million with transfers being approximately $13.5 million into capital and then approximately $142,000 into the USDA paying for some bonds. Contingency was also added at $447,000. This brings their projected ending fund balance to approximately $2 million. However, with the item that you just approved, that will bring their projected ending fund balance down to just under $2 million. That item that was just approved for the union only will cost approximately $110,000 in wages and benefits, or $130,000 fire district-wide. So, the only, that's actually the only change in the final fire district budget from the tentative budget that you've already approved. The official approval will be during the next meeting while I'll need your signatures on the taxation forms. Unless you have any other questions for me, that's all I have for the fire district.
Great, thank you, Jennifer. Fire Commissioner Gilman, questions, comments?
None, thank you.
Fire Commissioner Mitchell? Is there any public comment? Fire Commissioner Mitchell, you prepared to make a motion?
I am. Is a motion needed since we're doing the official next, next meeting?
Next meeting.
Oh, yeah, I guess there's no motion.
I mean...
Nope, too late.
Really, the only time I'd need a motion if you wanted to direct me to make any changes.
Got it. I think we're good.
All right, fair enough. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Chief. Onto item number twenty-six, recess to convene as the Story County Water and Sewer Board. Bring us item number twenty-seven, which is... Do you have a song and dance for this one?
No, I'm postponing that until next week, next meeting as well.
So just discussion only?
Yep.
All right, discussion only.
Just leaving it a little quicker.
Review and discussion of the 25 through 26 Story County Water Sewer projected final budget. Controller?
Good morning, Jennifer McCain, Story County Controller for the record. This is the projected final budget changes from the tentative for the water and sewer funds. The water funds projected revenue is at $803,000. There is a transfer in from infrastructure of $98,568 to help pay for their bond payments. The expenses are total $927,000, which includes those bond payments. This leaves that water fund with an ending fund balance of $1,597,000. This is a decrease from the prior year projected ending fund balance of $5,000. The sewer fund revenue stands at $539,000. Transfers from the infrastructure fund to pay for their bond payments is $210,000. This leaves their expenses at $778,000, including those bond payments, with an ending fund balance of approximately $1 million. After moving some things around and some capital repairs into infrastructure, their ending fund balance will actually increase by $54,000. It's important to note that these two funds have employees, and we are currently in negotiations with the AFSA union, and those changes are not reflected in this budget, so we do expect there to be some kind of an impact, so we have increased our contingency. With the water and sewer fund, we always discuss how these funds need to self-sustain, meaning that their rate payers pay for the operating costs. It's recently I've gained some new information that you, as the Board of County Commissioners and the Water and Sewer Board, can decide to fund capital repairs, maintenance, upgrades, and new projects. So with that new information, we are seeking and trying to investigate with the DA's office some alternatives to funding the Water and Sewer Board, whether that's a loan or just straight-up transfers to be able to pay for those items. At this time, I am asking the Board to approve putting a transfer into each of these funds of $2 million from the general fund. That's not reflected in any of this. After talking to Jason Worsbisky, the Public Works Director, we really find that it's important for the water and sewer funds to be able to accommodate small to medium capital repairs. For example, now I have to look at my phone, I'm sorry, he sent me a list. We have come up with several small items that just come up every year that have to be done. Our systems are aging and have been neglected for many years, and we've tried to be creative and put those into different funds, but the infrastructure fund is... It's, while it is very healthy now, it's not necessarily going to stay that way, and we have some very large projects coming up that I think would be better suited to use those. For example, this year, they need to buy some diffusers, I think 88 of them. If you need more information on any of this, I'm sure Jason will come up and give you more information. He's got a full recode of number one and number two water filters in the treatment plant, including new filter media. We need a new auger monster at the sewer plant, replacement of VFD controls, pumps, and blowers for the EQ basin at the sewer plant. And that's just a couple of the, quote, "small to medium" repairs. Small to medium, we're looking at anywhere from $100,000 to $500,000 per repair. If we transfer this money, we can feel solid that we can budget for those items within the water and sewer funds themselves. We can better track how much it's costing us just to do some of these small to middle items. So if you have any other questions on that, I'm happy to answer them, or Jason can come up and we can talk about that. But we really feel at this time this has got to be something we need to start moving forward doing. We would, of course, before we transfer or loan the water and sewer fund any money out of the general fund, we would have lengthier discussions and official approvals on both sides of your commissioner duties.
Nothing else?
Nope, unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Jennifer. Commissioner Gilman, any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
So if the decision is to make these transfers, do we need to nail down if they're going to be just transfers in or loans prior to approval of the budget, or is that something that would come afterwards?
I think we can make those decisions afterwards. The basic mechanism for moving the money would be transfers. It would be the official determination whether that's a loan or we're simply giving that money to those funds that would come after. But it's such a large amount of money, it would be $4 million coming out of the general fund, that I would rather have those in our budget so then we can work towards making those transfers for the best way to accommodate the needs.
Great, thank you. All right. Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Thank you again, Jennifer.
Thank you. So I would like you to make the, a motion that you accept the budget as presented with that $2 million transfer for each of those funds.
All right, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, so that would be with the discussed changes, right?
Right.
Because that's not reflected in what's currently in front of us.
Correct.
So I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve the 2025-2026 Story County Water Sewer projected final budgets with the changes discussed, specifically a $2 million transfer into each of those funds from the general fund for the May 20th final approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again, Jennifer, yes?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Onto item number twenty-eight, which is to recess to reconvene as the Story County Board of County Commissioners. Bringing us to item number thirty, which is discussion for possible action, consideration and possible approval for special use permit 2025-035. The applicant requests a special use permit to construct two segments of an overall 10.4-mile 345-kilovolt power line outside of the existing Tahoe Reno Industrial Center designated transmission corridor. The special use permit addresses the transmission corridor land use and the additional height located on land zone forestry for the two segments located outside of the boundary of the Tahoe Reno Industrial Center. The proposal will include approximately seven poles greater than 45 feet in height, with the proposed heights ranging from approximately 83 feet to 139 feet based on the topography of the pole location. The overall power line will connect from the Tracy substation on Waltham Way to the Comstock substation on Battery Boulevard. The proposed transmission line is subject to the special use permit, will be located within a portion of section 004 and 027, T19N-R22E, Story County, Nevada, APN 004-154-25, and 004-154-29. Kathy?
Thank you. So I think I tricked you into doing the whole summary of the project with this one, but...
You're welcome.
NV Energy is proposing to do a transmission line between their Waltham Way facility and their facility on Battery Boulevard. For the most part, the transmission corridor is following, is within the boundaries of the Tahoe Reno Industrial Center. That doesn't require any kind of special use permit because it's in a designated transmission corridor. But there are two segments of this that kind of fall out just right outside the boundary of the Tahoe Reno Industrial Center corridor because of topography and making the lines and stuff work. These are going in, NV Energy does have existing easements for these areas, so they are going within land that the underlying landowner is familiar, has worked out their easement with them. This was heard at our May 1st Planning Commission meeting, and the Planning Commissioners unanimously recommended of approval. We didn't receive any public comments during the noticing periods or at the Planning Commission. I can answer any questions, and I'm happy to go over any questions, may I?
Thank you, Kathy. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
Comment added upon as of a caution I am going to abstain from this item.
All right, noted, thank you, sir. Vice Chairman, you have any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
All right, is there any public comment? Does this guy know that the 29 has been postponed? Is that recent? I believe so, but anyway. All right. No worries. Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Kathy, would you care to read the findings?
Yes, so the findings affect for a motion of approval. This approval is for special use permit 2025-035 to construct two, excuse me, two segments of an overall 10.4-mile 345-kV power line outside of the existing Tahoe Reno Industrial Center designated transmission corridor. Special use permit addresses the transmission corridor land use and the additional height located on land zone forestry for the two segments located outside of the boundary of the Tahoe Reno Industrial Center. The proposal will include approximately seven poles greater than 45 feet in height, with the proposed heights ranging from approximately 83 feet to 139 feet based on topography of the pole location. The overall power line will connect from the Tracy substation on Waltham Way to the Comstock substation on Battery Boulevard. The proposed transmission line, subject to this special use permit, will be located within a portion of section 004 and 027, T19N-R22E, Story County, Nevada, APN 004-154-25, and 004-154-29. Special use permit conforms to the 2024 Story County Master Plan for the industrial and transition from resources to industrial designated area, excuse me, in which the subject property is located. A discussion supporting this finding for the special use permit is provided in Section 2. D of the staff report, and the contents thereof are cited in an approval of the special use permit. The special use permit complies with the general purpose, goals, objectives, and standards of the County Master Plan, zoning ordinance, and any other plan, program, map, or ordinance adopted or under consideration pursuant to the official notice by the county. The proposal, location, size, height, operations, and other significant features will be compatible with and will not cause substantial negative impact on the adjacent land uses, or will perform a function or provide a service that is essential to the surrounding land uses, community, and neighborhood. Special use permit will result in no substantial or undue adverse effect on adjacent property, the character of the neighborhood, traffic conditions, parking, public improvements, public sites, or right-of-way, or other matters affecting the public health, safety, and general welfare, either as they now exist or as they may in the future be developed as a result of the implementation of the provisions and policies of the County Master Plan, this title, and any other plans, program, map, or ordinance adopted or under consideration pursuant to an official notice by the county or other governmental agency having jurisdiction to guide growth and development. The proposed use in the proposed area will be adequately served by and will impose no undue burden on any of the improvements, facilities, utilities, or services provided by the county or other governmental agency having jurisdiction in the county. Special use permit with the recommended conditions of approval complies with the requirements of Chapter 17.03.150 Special Use Permit, Chapter 17.32-F Forestry, and Chapter 17.12 General Provisions of the Story County Code. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Not this motion. Just kidding.
If I did it, you could do it.
Yeah. In accordance with the recommendation by the Planning Commission staff, the findings affect under Section 3A of this report as read into the record by staff, and the other findings deemed appropriate by the Board of County Commissioners. And in compliance with the conditions of approval, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve special use permit 2025-035 to construct two segments of an overall 10.4-mile 345-kv power line outside of the existing Tahoe Reno Industrial Center designated transmission corridor. The special use permit addresses the transmission corridor land use and the additional height location, additional height located on land zone forestry for the two segments located outside of the boundary of the Tahoe Reno Industrial Center. The proposal will include approximately seven poles greater than 45 feet in height, with the proposed heights ranging from approximately 83 feet to 139 feet based on topography of the pole location. The overall power line will connect from the Tracy substation on Waltham Way to the Comstock substation on Battery Boulevard. The proposed transmission line, subject to this special use permit, will be located within a portion of section 004 and 027, Township 19N Range 22E, and Story County, Nevada, APN 004-154-25 and 004-154-29.
You have a motion, do we have a second? What?
It's you, he's out.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second?
It was so stunning.
Yeah. I was mesmerized. Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Oh, not unanimously, I'm sorry. Motion passes, yes. Unanimously. Yeah, there was one abstention. Does that cover me? Does that cover me? That works. Brian, we're good?
Yep.
You're good. That works.
All right. Thank you. On to item number 31, discussion for possible action. Discussion of possible action to approve the allocation of up to $850,000 from Story County Rail Tax Funds to the Nevada Commission for Reconstruction of the VNT Railway for capital improvements and repairs in fiscal year 26. Good morning, Leah.
Good morning. Wearing a slightly different hat today. Uh, for the record, my name is Leah Cruz and I serve as the Treasurer for the Nevada Commission for the reconstruction of the VNT Railway. I'm here today to respectfully request approval of the allocation of up to $850,000 from Story County's Rail Tax Fund for capital improvement scheduled for fiscal year 26. Um, these funds will support two projects, 600, approximately 650,000 for repairs and stabilization, stabilization at the Overman Pit, and approximately $200,000 for ballast and drainage work at three key locations within Story County. Both projects are outlined in our capital improvement plan and are necessary to ensure the continued safety and operation of the railway. Um, I appreciate your consideration and continue to support in helping support, preserve, and operate the his, this historic asset. And I'm welcome. Any questions that you may have?
Thank you very much, Leah. Commissioner Yumman, do you have any questions or comments for Leah?
I do not. Thank you.
All right. Vice Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, out of an abundance of caution, I, I'm just going to disclose that I serve on the board of this organization as well. It's one of my assignments. Uh, I don't believe that that impacts my ability to, um, to consider this item fairly, but because of kind of the unique arrangement between the county and this organization, there ends up being some crossover checks and balances when it comes to, um, when it comes to approving funding. And so if, if the board would like me to abstain, I'm happy to do that, uh, but I don't see it as a conflict beyond that.
All right. Thank you for that, Vice Chairman. Noted. Uh, is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve the allocation of up to $850,000 from the Story County Rail Fund to the Nevada Commission for the reconstruction of the VNT Railway for fiscal year 26, capital improvement projects and repairs within Story County as presented.
I'll second. There is a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Leah.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number 32, which is discussion for possible action. Review and discussion of the 25 through 26 Story County projected final budget. Comptroller McCain?
Good morning. Jennifer McCain, Story County Comptroller for the record. This is, once again, the first projected final budget. Updating commissioners as to where we stand before the final is approved. I don't think I previously mentioned that we have a tight window with, for the official final approval. The Nevada Department of Taxation gives us a very small window to seek your approval and your, um, signatures and submit it to their board. So, um, that's why so many updates, to make sure we're all on the same page. With that, the final budget that's been presented to you, the revenues have increased less than 1% as we went through and tightened some things up. Expenses, we have a total increase of 5% or that's a change from 39.4 million to 41.3 million. The majority of these changes are within salary and benefits, um, at approximately 5%. That's because we have now included some reallocations and reclasses for the nonrepresented group of our employees as well because, um, it looks like SB 116 is seeking some moment, is gaining momentum. It passed in the Senate a couple of weeks ago. It's actually being heard in the Assembly today. I followed other, um, of my fellow comptrollers within the state and we have opted to budget for those increases to make sure that we have that money available and we don't have to rely on contingency. With that, our specific percentage breakdowns between the approved tentative budget and the final budget in front of you. We have a 3% increase in, um, wages. We have a 10% increase in benefits. Service and supplies has less than a 1% and capital outlay has 0% increase. That leaves us with the 5% increase for, um, our total expenses in the general fund. Our contingency is still reflecting in the budget in front of you, slightly higher than usual. That's because, um, we don't have final numbers from our liability insurance, which I actually did receive this morning, and we are well within what's budgeted. However, the commission could opt to not have a $25,000 deductible, so that could increase our, um, actual premium. As well, we still are in the middle of ongoing ASME negotiations, so there could be some expense-related increases there. So I'm still more confident, would feel more confident leaving that contingency slightly higher. Finally, as we discussed in the water and sewer budget, I am requesting approval and if necessary, further discussion on transferring $4 million of the ending fund balance out of the general fund into the water and sewer. This would bring our projected ending fund balance to approximately 8.4, $8.4 million, which in my opinion is a very comfortable 22% of our expected expenses for the coming year. I'm happy to answer any questions on the general fund before I move into the other special revenue funds.
Thank you, Jennifer. Commissioner Yumman, do you have any questions about the general fund?
No questions, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Okay. So with our other special revenue funds, I'm not going to touch on all of them, but I have a few items specific to a few of them. Um, the Road Fund, um, after we changed that apportionment of the property taxes and interest, their revenue went up approximately a million dollars. Um, we have an increase in the Road Fund of, uh, in expenses of $160,000. That was from, um, I believe, Mark Twain Drainage. Um, not in this budget is the contract that you approved earlier. Those are projects that are happening, um, the current year of $4.5 million. However, with the timeline of what's happening, after discussing this with Jason of Public Works, we've decided to, um, budget an extra $2 million, which the Road Ending Fund Balance can handle just in case that project carries over into July. We could still have money budgeted to pay for it. Um, equipment acquisitions saw an increase in expenses of approximately $109,000. This is for, um, we moved two utility trailers that were initially budgeted in capital projects into equipment acquisition. Uh, the Capital Fund, we have a revenue increase of approximately $11.5 million. This is split between transfers and the change of the Ad Valorem apportionment. Um, and we have a slight increase in capital projects. That was just going through and tightening some things up and having to roll over a few projects that will not be completed this year. Those, a couple of those would be, um, we have two new, not new projects, but projects that won't start until July. One is the VCH Community Center upgrades and the other one is the Community Development Mudroom. We're going to be using one of our new funds, extraordinary repairs and maintenance. Pipers boiling, heating boiler system, um, needs some significant repairs, so we budgeted $75,000 in that fund. And then we have in infrastructure, we have budgeted, as mentioned, a couple of those, um, minor repairs, but we have to have a way to pay for them before the $2 million transfers go through. And that would be for the auger monster that the sewer plant needs. Not reflected in this budget are, um, using another one of our new funds, risk management, which pays for insurance premiums or unforeseen things that happen, um, due to emergencies or that insurance, our insurance carriers won't cover. And I would like to budget $100,000 in that and it will not, um, it will not cause any negative repercussions on that ending fund balance. That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mr. Yumman, any questions on this?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. That's it?
That's it. And again, I would like, um, if possible, a, um, approval to accept this budget as presented with the changes that I've discussed, unless you don't want to approve them.
Fair enough. Thank you. Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve the 2025-2026 Story County projected final budgets with the changes discussed for the May 20th final approval.
A second. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Can I ask one more question? Um, if any of you are not going to be here at the May 20th meeting, I would appreciate if you approved an email stating that we can use your signature stamp on the budget. Okay? Thank you.
Do they have signature stamps?
I don't have them.
I don't have one.
I think they're in Austin's office.
The Autopen? We don't have those. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
It was not a political statement. On to item number 3, 33. Discussion for possible action. Consideration of possible approval authorize the county manager to provide a letter of acknowledgement regarding, uh, CPex International Nevada Limited application of the Governor's Office of Economic Development for a sales and use tax abatement, modified business tax abatement, and personal property tax abatement for the operations plan in Story County. Laura?
Thank you, Laura Mather, for the record. The Story County Manager's Office received a letter dated April 4th, 2025 from the Governor's Office of Economic Development, GOED. This letter is a notice of public meeting of the Board of GOED to review the CPex International Nevada Limited's application on May 8th, 2025 at 2:00 PM. The application states that this business will result, result in at least 12 new full-time jobs for at least five years. The company is planning to invest $355,918 in capital equipment. The 10-year total economic impact is estimated to be $73,275,014 and new tax revenue generated over 10 years is estimated to be $2,674,538. Not sure I said that right. GOED estimates that if the abatement is awarded, the total sales and use tax abatement to be $19,931 and the modified business tax abatement is estimated to be $12,661, which constitutes a 50% abatement of the tax due for four years. The personal property tax abatement is estimated at $7,653, which constitutes a 50% abatement of the tax due for 10 years. On a side note, I would like to point out that in their application, they correctly identified their address in the Tahoe Reno Industrial Center, Asma Karen, Nevada, 89437.
Abatement approved.
Double it.
That's it. I was so thrilled to see that.
All right. Any, anything else above that? No?
That's it.
Commissioner Yumman?
None.
Questions, comments?
Thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Good.
Uh, public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve the Story County Manager to provide a letter of acknowledgement regarding CPex International Nevada Limited's application to the Governor's Office of Economic Development for a sales and use tax abatement, modified business tax abatement, and personal property tax abatement for their operations planned in Story County.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto item number 34, discussion for possible action. Consideration of possible approval for the Dow contract renewal for the county GIS service for $100,000 for July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to speak on behalf of Assessor Seddon. She was not able to make the meeting. Uh, this is her item. She annually contracts with Dow Engineering to provide geographic information systems, GIS, across the county. And this contract here is a task order that lines up with the master service agreement with Dow. Uh, these basically are GIS services related to all of our, uh, departments generally. It relates to the parcel maps being digitized and also special projects like the Dayton Valley Area Drainage Master Plan that, uh, Ms. Canfield's working on with planning and also our web, uh, GIS service. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, uh, that's all we have.
Thank you, Austin. Commissioner Yumman, questions or comments?
None. Thank you.
Vice Chairman? Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
In accordance with the staff recommendation, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve the renewal contract for Dow for county GIS services in the amount of $100,000 from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026.
I'll second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Austin. Moving on to item number 35, this discussion for possible action. Consideration of, uh, approval of Task Order 80 to the Story County Dow Master Service Agreement causing reimbursement related to Story County 2018 design criteria and improvement standards update assistance and other related planning matters. Kathy?
Uh, yes, thank you. So, this, um, is a proposed, um...
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't read the last part. Uh, other planning matters, Dow will be reimbursed for time and materials related to assisting county staff with the update not to exceed $48,700 for fiscal year 24 through 25 and $67,000 for fiscal year 25 through 26. Kathy?
Thank you. So this is a project that we've had in our, um, the planning department's, um, list of projects to, to work on. Um, we have a 2018 Design Standards Handbook and we're proposing to update that. We're working with Dow, um, we're proposing to work with Dow on this, the same people that we were working with on the master plan. Um, and coordinating some of the work that came out of the master plan with this update and then also looking at how this will relate to the zoning code. Um, so we're trying to make this a little bit more, um, identifiable when it, when it's applicable. Um, this will be important if we, um, have submittals of planned unit developments. I think that's going, going to be the biggest area of that or, you know, multi-family development. So, um, this has been budgeted both in this year and next year's budgets and they're ready to get going and can do a lot of work this, before the June 30th deadline. So that's why it's broken up into the two numbers, so.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. Commissioner Yumman, do you have any questions or comments?
None. Thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I'm good.
Is there any public comment about this item? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve Task Order 80 to the Story County Dow Master Service Agreement causing reimbursement related to Story County 2018 Design Criteria and Improvement Standards Update Assistance and Other Related Planning Matters not to exceed $48,700 for the fiscal year 24-25 as identified in the Planning Department Fiscal Year 24-25 budget and not to exceed $67,000 as identified in the proposed Planning Department Fiscal Year 25-26 budget.
I'll second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Before we continue on with our last two agenda items, a break has been requested. We'll see everybody back here just after the, uh, noon buzzer. We'll see everybody back here just after the noon buzzer. Yes. Yes.
Like, ten minutes?
Ten minutes, yeah.
Commissioner Gilman, you ready to go?
Right.
Vice Chairman, you good?
You're good.
Good now, Jim. All right, it's 12:06, we're going to reconvene the meeting. Bring us to item number thirty-six, which is discussion for possible action, consideration, did we do this one? No. Consideration of approval of Task Order 83 of the Story County Dowell Master Service Agreement causing reimbursement related to the B Street Record of Survey and other related planning matters. Dowell will be reimbursed for time and materials related to a boundary survey of the B Street right-of-way in Virginia City not to exceed $90,000 for fiscal year '25-'26. This project and funding amount has been included in the planning department budget for fiscal year '25 through '26 under category of professional services. Kathy?
Thank you. So this is a record of survey, or a survey of the B Street right-of-way that we have, and this is going to help us with the parking study that we're doing and looking for opportunities of where increases in parking or reconfiguration of parking might work. So this will be from one end of B Street to the other, hitting C Street on both sides and 341 on the other. This is also going to include a survey of that land that is between B Street and C Street as you go down the hill where our election signs are identified in our sign ordinance. There was some question that had come up during the last election cycle with NDOT on whether this was NDOT property or Story County property. So this is going to, to work with also identifying where those boundaries are. I think that'll be helpful for us to know in the future. We are also going to do a, a second task order, that'll be a small number, to include the right-of-way that's between C Street and B Street that's considered North Street, which is just a paper right-of-way that's there. But there's been some questions also about a retaining wall that we've been working with NDOT with, and we'd actually like to see where exactly that retaining wall is, if that falls into our North Street right-of-way, if it falls into the C Street right-of-way, or if it's on private property. We wouldn't be doing any survey work on private property, but we'd be identifying, we would know where that, that was. So, the, this is one that we've also, this has been in the planning department budget. We've also done a smaller task order to get, for the surveyors to get started before B Street starts getting ripped up with the reconstruction work so that they can identify some monument pieces and that before all that construction work happens. So they'll be starting on this, and this task order will be the work that they're doing as of July 1. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I'm good.
Is there any public comment? Not seeing any, Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I, Commissioner Mitchell, moved to approve Task Order 83 to the Story County Dowell Master Service Agreement causing reimbursement related to the B Street Record of Survey and other related planning matters. that you may want to take on them? Noting at the bottom, uh, that, uh, the very end, there is still position pending for the last two bills. AB two forty-one, that's multifamily housing and the commercial zone requirement. And the second one is SB one eighty, minimum insurance for trucking. I was asked to put those items on and to get direction from the board on how you feel about those. And I believe one of you and/or Alex would like to discuss those two.
Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
No.
Vice Chairman?
Um, I'll hold my comments. I have comments on those last two bills that were referenced.
Okay.
Okay, then I'll go to Senate Bill sixty-nine at this point, and then I'll pass it over to Alex. Uh, Senate Bill sixty-nine, our bill, as you're aware, has passed, uh, the Senate with bipartisan support from both Republican and Democrats. Uh, at this point, uh, LCB has written the bill as it came out of the Senate with a couple little adjustments regarding the word "local" added to the ten and twenty percent that would be subject to negotiations for Government Services Agreement with a Gigafactory meeting, the one or a three-point-five-billion-dollar, uh, abatement category. Otherwise, it's pretty similar to what it was initially. We're comfortable with where it is at this point. There's been a lot of discussion back and forth and visits with members down in the legislature about the bill and where it is. Uh, at this point, there is a hearing scheduled for at four o'clock today with Assembly revenue. It has passed out of the Senate. Now we go through the Assembly and follow the process again. And there's been some discussion about requested amendments at this point. Uh, we're comfortable with the bill as it is. We believe it's one of the probably most improved bills, I guess you would say, in the legislature. It's been amended significantly to try to bridge gaps, uh, between opposition and other concerns that have been brought up. And we think it still meets the purpose and intent of what the original bill was trying to do for Story County and other county, cities, and fire districts across the state, which it represents. At this point, we recommend that we continue to support the bill, move forward with the Assembly Committee today, listen and respond to the committee, and I'm open to any, uh, discussion, I believe, that you may want to have on this bill at this point.
All right. Commissioner Gilman, any questions at this time, comments?
No, thank you.
All right. Vice Chairman?
So, uh, I, I think we're at a little bit of a choose-your-own-adventure point. I su, I support the recommendation of staff that we perceive of the bill as is. An amendment has been presented, uh, that would, that would change a few things. Um, they're, they're relatively minor, uh, with, with the exception of one of them, and that would be reducing the amount that could be negotiated for, for the biggest abatements. I think that's a pretty heavy lift and, and would put the margins a little tight. Uh, just for reference, the first Gigafactory, our agreement with Tesla, twenty-six, twenty-seven million dollars over ten years, this map would put that on a Gigafactory that's around thirty million. That's pretty close and, and realizing that the Gigafactory had a lot of the infrastructure already in place. My bigger concern is if we amend at this point, number one, we have strong bipartisan support coming out of the Senate. It feels like negotiating against ourselves to amend a bill that had that broad support before we hear from the committee on the Assembly side if they have input or questions. But secondly, if we amend the bill, uh, without, uh, a strong reason to, then it would have to go back to the Senate for concurrence at some point, and that kind of throws it back into the process. I feel like we're getting fairly close to the end of the session. If we can build the support behind it and just get it out and done, it may not be perfect. We may need to revisit it at some point in the future. But, uh, but I feel like we've done a ton of work on it and gotten it to a really good place where it's good policy. So, anyway, my feeling on it is, let it ride, um, bring it through as is. Don't amend at this point. See what happens in the hearing, and then if an amendment is needed, that's something that we can talk about.
And Chairman Commissioners, may I add to that, just an element, uh, regarding what you're talking about, Commissioner Mitchell, also is with the language change to the local portion of sales and use tax. We still believe we're comfortable with an ability to negotiate what we need for fire, a city, and a county. But you start getting below that twenty percent that's being requested with that local language in there, it starts becoming potentially problematic.
Yeah, and, and to be clear, what that means is, it's only a percentage of the local taxes, which is less than a whole abatement. So, on a twenty percent, uh, limit, that's like eighteen percent of the total abatement that they're getting, because it's, they're, we're not able to negotiate for any of what the state is giving up. Ironically, the local taxes account for about ninety percent of what is given up to get these companies to come here. And so, that state portion is fairly small, but it's being excluded from our ability to negotiate offsets. So, I don't, um, cut, cutting it too close, I, I, I don't think that's the right move for local jurisdictions.
Yeah, I gotta agree with you, Vice Chairman. Um, I think that we've made, we've made changes throughout this process. I feel comfortable with where the bill's at right now, um, so I don't propose any changes.
Do you know, has anybody, uh, talked with the Governor's Office recently, uh, about this, directly?
Yeah, we have ongoing discussions. So, so when we say the Governor's Office, there are kind of two entities that we're talking about here. One is the Governor's Office of Economic Development. And then there's the Governor's Office, meaning his policy staff, that are a little more general. And we've had conversations with both. It is, it's the Governor's Office of Economic Development that has come and proposed this, uh, the, this amendment. The, the challenge is this, I, I didn't find out they had issues with our bill till, till the first week of session when I ran into them by chance in the building. And as soon as I found out, now, my understanding is, they were presented with the wording of the bill way back in November. And so, they didn't approach us at all for two, two-and-a-half months. Um, as soon as I found out they had issues, I asked for a meeting. It was set and then canceled because of a conflict. Asked for another meeting, no response. I said, "Can you at least get us a list of what concerns you have?" That list was not forthcoming, and, um, and it, I've had to, I feel like we've had to drag them to the table to engage with us on this bill. What it feels like is every time we meet, several concerns are expressed. We address those concerns, and then the next time we meet, several different concerns are expressed. But we're told, "This is it. This is, th, these are the only concerns we have." And at some point, um, I, I don't know how, I don't know how you, you, you work with a moving goalpost like that.
Sure.
And so, uh, it feels like more meaningful engagement is happening now, after we got the votes to get it out of the Senate, when we're down the road quite a ways. And so, um, a, and so they're the ones asking us to amend further, and, uh, the Governor's Office of Economic Development. And, um, and the response that we have given so far is, we're eager to hear what the committee has to say, what input they can give to us, and then we'll, we'll respond accordingly after that hearing happens.
Great, thank you.
And I'd like to add on to that, if I may. Uh, specifically, I asked for the Governor's Office as well, whether myself or Commissioner Mitchell or Commissioner, uh, Carmona or our team, has met with the Governor himself, uh, with Chris Riley from the Governor's Office over infrastructure. He's a key component, as he was the chief negotiator, uh, with the Tesla Gigafactory, so he's very familiar with the processes and how these things work that are in SB sixty-nine. Tim Robb, who's not in the same position he was, but he's aware of this as well and has been met with. Ryan Cherry, the Chief of Staff of the Governor's Office, as well as with GOED, Tom Burns himself, the Director, Stephen Wood, their Chief Lobbyists, as well as the Regional Development Authorities like Northern Nevada Development Authority and the Economic Development Authority, Western Nevada. Both of them are representatives. In addition to a very lengthy list of other folks that are in this, whether it's WNDD or other folks that are related to government, economic development, RDAs, or whatever agencies you want to say in this room.
Okay.
Okay, at this point, then, I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to Mr. Tancheck. I believe he has some things he would like to discuss. If we are done at this point discussing Senate Bill sixty-nine. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Austin. Alex Tancheck with Silver State Government Relations. Uh, I do not have too much to talk about. Um, just a couple bills on my list that I wanted to discuss. Uh, one was previously mentioned, SB one sixteen. Uh, I was not at the hearing today, but it did occur this morning, and I have heard it went very positive for Senator Daley and the proponents of the bill. Uh, the other bill I wanted to talk about was SB seventy-eight. Uh, this has definitely been one that's received a lot of attention. Um, uh, when the, for reference, the, the bill relates to consolidation of a number of occupational licensing boards, advisory boards, commissions, things of that nature. Uh, included in that was consolidation of historic, uh, and cultural affairs boards, which would have, uh, included the Comstock Historic District Commission. Uh, so the bill, when it was presented to the committee the last month, I believe, uh, had an amendment from the Department of Business and Industry that would have removed the Comstock Historic District from the bill. Uh, the bill received a amend and do pass motion from the committee. Uh, it was not supported by the entire committee. Uh, all of the Democrats on the committee actually opposed the bill, with Senator Flores joining the Republicans as a means to progress the bill, let the conversation continue, let the bill keep going forward. Uh, once the bill got to the floor, Senator Flores withdrew the amendment, and the bill was referred to the Senate Committee on Finance. Uh, so as it stands now, the Comstock Historic District is still in the bill. Um, and it is the same bill as it was when it was introduced back in November. Um, we heard during Rural Caucus last Thursday from the Department of Business and Industry that a further amendment will be coming to the bill, uh, that will be submitted to the Senate Finance Committee in short order. Um, we have inquired as to whether or not we could receive a copy of that amendment. Uh, we're still waiting to hear, but our suspicion is that the amendment will be similar to what was presented to the Government Affairs Committee with additional changes to the bill, kind of paring it down, paring it down even more than it, than it, uh, existed in the amendment. Uh, I would add that, uh, I believe it was last week, uh, the Department of Business and Industry had budget closings, which included their Office for Boards, Commissions, and Professional Standards, which is where most of the provisions in SB seventy-eight would be, would be housed. Uh, the budget closed without, um, approval of the additional positions requested by the department in order to implement SB seventy-eight. Uh, I would also add that SHPO and the Comstock Historic District Commission also received budget closings, uh, recently. So, I think, while we're still waiting written confirmation, uh, we believe the Comstock Historic District will continue, uh, will continue to exist and will not be, uh, consolidated in SB seventy-eight. Uh, the other bill that I wanted to talk about was SB four sixty-one. Uh, this is the Governor's Economic Development Bill. This was introduced last week. Um, uh, the, 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 the bill makes numerous provisions relating to economic development. Uh, one of the big ones is the addition of partial abatements of property, sales and use tax, and other business taxes, uh, in an amount not to exceed sixty percent of the, uh, of the total taxes owed. Uh, um, there are various, uh, aspects that, you know, businesses applying for this could apply for with GOED and receive, such as if you were to pay a hundred and fifty percent hourly wage, uh, if you have agreements with ENCHIE for research and development and that kind of thing. Um, um, and housing, providing housing assistance for employees, uh, various things like that. Uh, this would apply for high-impact businesses, which the bill defines as electric battery manufacturers, clean energy and clean water tech, uh, uh, companies, advanced manufacturers, aerospace and defense, and biotech and pharmaceutical-type industries. Uh, the bill also offers transferable tax credits to companies that, uh, offer to, uh, help develop childcare facilities. Uh, the bill also creates a community infrastructure grant program that would, uh, allow eligible entities to apply for water, sewer, gas, electric, and broadband, uh, infrastructure, uh, needs, as well as other housing and wastewater and transit, um, uh, infrastructure projects. Uh, and finally, the bill makes additional changes regarding workforce development and kind of trying to help, uh, enhance workforce development in the state. Uh, that, those were really all the bills I had on my list to discuss. Um, we are twenty-seven days and fifteen hours until Sine Di. Um, the economic forum met last month, and they're projecting a budget shortfall of a hundred and ninety-one million dollars. So, the next month should be fun.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I comment on those bills and maybe recommend some, uh, positions?
Sure.
Um, so on SB seventy-eight, uh, I, you know, e, even though it seems like it's going to end up, uh, not affecting the Historic District, the, the problem is, the winding route that it's taking to get there is creating instability to the point where Historic District staff are fearing for their, uh, jobs and are potentially looking at or even asking to be transferred to other jobs because they feel like there's no continuity or longevity with what they've got, because it's being tossed around like a football down at the legislature. So I feel like it's important for us, we've already taken a position of opposition, but maybe to activate, as long as, as long as that's a possibility, to get really active in our, and vocal in our opposition to any effect on the advisory board, specifically on the Historic District. Uh, because it's, i, it's hard enough to find people to fill those positions. It's a fairly specialized field. Uh, but then for them to feel like the rug's being pulled out from under them, regardless of us assuring them that it, you know, we think it's gonna be fine, uh, that's tough. And that's gonna have a, a big impact on us if we can't get that under control. So, I feel like, um, authorization for our team to get pretty vocal on that and, and really make our position known and, uh, and rally whatever other resources we have, I think that's the right move at this point, until we have certainty that it won't be affected.
Could I add to that, Commissioner? Austin Osborne for the record. Um, in addition, I think it's important to note, if you want, in any correspondence, whether it's written or otherwise, that we have proposed alternatives, that the county would actually assume a lot of the responsibilities, and working with Lyon County to do the same, and that we're looking at a regional approach for this. I'd be happy to draft a opposition letter with those resolutions potentially in them and in representation of this board in doing such. There's been lots of other agencies that have done the same, as you can see on now, as.
I don't have a problem with that personally.
I think that sounds good.
I agree.
Um, on SB four sixty-one, which is the Governor's Economic Development Bill, you know, we, we've been asked to support that. Um, I think it's quite clear, it's, it's a broad bill, lots of stuff in it, and I, I don't think there's any way that it goes through without some sort of amendment. Typically, the rules down at the legislature are, if you don't support it as written, you have to oppose it. So if it's not like a hundred percent, we like it the way it is, then you have to be in opposition. Um, but, you know, the question is, can, can we find, uh, a way to support it, realizing that likely it will be amended and that we would have an opportunity to express concerns and work to, um, include anything? One of the concerns that we have is just needing a, a clarification or certainty that there's not retroactivity, that new abatement programs couldn't be stacked on top of existing companies that we already have out here to increase or decrease the amount of local taxes that we're getting. Um, and, and I have a feeling some of the other provisions are gonna be problematic because of the budget shortfall, and so, there, there's just not money to fund some of those things. Um, anyway, I don't, I don't know what the board wants to do if we want to take a position in favor. Things are gonna move quickly at this point, and I'm anticipating before our next meeting, there'll be some sort of action on the bill. Um, and, you know, if we want to be involved in that, I don't know what the right posture is to get, to get to the table and, um, or if, or if we want to give kind of some open-ended guidance to our team that gives them flexibility to, to go one way or the other with that.
Um, I don't, I don't have a problem with taking a, a position on it. Um, I don't know if you guys want to draft something, but I mean, I'm, I'm okay to jump on board with you. You know, we can support it for now, and then if things come up, or those amendments come up, but I, I don't have enough direction to give you.
Sure. Are you okay with kind of temporarily, we say we're supporting but cautious, um, and, and we'll kind of monitor how it goes and then bring, bring it back if there are things that cause us concern?
That works for me.
Could we add to motion, if there are just any adverse impacts that would occur to Story County, we'd focus on those in any opposition?
Okay.
That works.
Yep. Great, thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, not on those bills. I have a couple, a couple others.
Okay.
And those are just the, the last two that I asked to be added to this list. The first one is SB one eighty. What it basically would do is double the insurance requirements for trucks that operate just within Nevada. Um, they're, they're not doing interstate, interstate trucks because they can't regulate. They're not doing interstate trucks because they can't regulate interstate commerce, but it's from $750,000 of liability to 1.5 million. That has potential impact for farmers, for small operators. It far exceeds the other requirements that are in place even for interstate operation. And so I would advocate that we take a position against that bill. I think it's... And be fairly vocal about it. I think that's... It's a bad policy, singling out... It's going to be very regressive. It's going to really hurt small businesses, independent truckers, and farms that use trucks and those kind of things.
Yeah, I would agree with you on that.
Okay.
I don't have a problem either.
Thank you. And then AB 241, it would allow... It would require that by right, instead of a special use permit, in commercial zoning, you could do multifamily housing. Now, I don't know what the impact would be to us. It does have an exception for industrial, says this doesn't apply to industrial, so I don't think that the tri-center would be affected by it. My issue with the bill is this is the legislature trying to tell us how to do local land use planning, which in my understanding is the local province, and I don't think it should be micromanaged by the legislature. I think for that reason, we should oppose.
I agree.
Yep. Great, thank you.
Any other ones?
No, we're good. Just continuing the positions on everything else that we've already taken.
I'm good with that. Austin, you got... You have more?
I don't. I will let you know, there would have been a communication with NACO. They are still supporting Senate Bill 69 and other folks around the state as well, so nothing has changed there.
Okay. Do you need more direction for the motion?
At this point, if you make a motion that's in there and just incorporate this discussion into that motion and what you've directed, I think since we've done that in the past, it would be sufficient, pending legal.
All right. Nothing else, Vice Chairman?
Nope.
Commissioner Gilman, anything at this time?
None, thank you.
Is there any public comment on any of the bills that we've talked about? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah. Hi, Commissioner Mitchell. Move to direct county staff and lobbyists to represent Story County on known BDRs, bills, and other potential legislation affecting Story County as discussed on the record today.
A second. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Alex, thanks for making the trip up, man. Good luck down there today. Right, moving on to item number 38, this discussion for possible action. So second readings for business license A through N. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Vice Chairman, any questions or comments?
No, I'm good.
Is there any public comment regarding these business license second readings? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, move to approve the second reading of business licenses under item 38 listed as A through N.
A second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number 39, this is the second and final time for public commentary in this meeting. Is there any public comment in the courtroom today? Not seeing any. Onto item number 40, it's adjourned of all active and recessed boards on the agenda. It is 12:35, this meeting is adjourned. Not to be rude, but we do have closed session, so please pack up your bags and have a nice day. Get up, move on out.
Don't have to go home. You got to get up out of here.
Yeah.